I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for Thursday, August 5th, 2021. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys are on mute. Thanks, Jen. I'd like to introduce the board members present tonight. To my right, I have Mr. Phil Roy, be soon to be Mrs. Allison something, but Ms. Allison Hurlicy, Paul Amitucci, and Jerry Graybill. We've got Jen McCabe, who is our code enforcement officer, remote, and we've got the town planner and development coordinator, webmaster, James Belissimo. That being said, I'm going to open the first public comment session. The public comment session is limited to owners and residents of the town of Berwick with anything under the purview of the Berwick Planning Board. This is not the public hearing. If you're here for the public hearing for the solar farm or the land use amendments, we will have a time for you to speak on that. That being said, public comment session is now open. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close the public comment session and move on to the public hearing. Our first public hearing is for the solar farm on Sophie's Way, which is in the R3 zone, and New England Solar Garden Corporation. Do you want to give us a little brief Jameso? And then we can have any public that wants to come up.
We had a site walk this evening, a site walk, a discussion. We're screening, noise, condition of the road, kind of talking about the Butters' experiences with construction. I think those are the main points. So tonight, this is for the public hearing. The application was found complete last meeting. I have a series of conditions of approval. The board found that you're ready to move forward with approval. These are the standard conditions of approval that we've had for the past two projects. And there's a fifth one. I think that we should add, and I'll just go over that language now, that any identified direct views from ground level shall be screened. So that speaks to the comment from the last meeting.
Sure. We just went and looked at that site, too.
If you want to just either step up to the mic or wait.
We just, one of the main commenters, we went to look to see what their direct view was. And there is a possibility that they're, they might have a view of that. But I also want to note that we checked the plans and we do, are incorporating a green screen on that side. So while we may not be able to shield it directly with a tree everywhere, they will have the green screen, which will also block their view.
Perfect. So I want to just let the members of the public know. So for the public hearing, you're welcome to come up. You can ask questions. You can state statements. We will not, we don't do a back and forth. We take down all of your notes and then we address them at the old business section of the meeting. So we don't do a back and forth, just because people expect us to do that sometimes. Also, James, why is the approval of minutes in the middle of our agenda? How does that get stuck there? It's fine. All right, so, public hearing. If any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns about the solar farm, please come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and let us know what you think. Anything? No? All right. Seeing nobody come up, I'm going to close the public hearing for the solar farm on Sophie's Way. I am now going to open the public hearing for the land use ordinance amendments. Jody?
Jody Rogers, 420 Portland Street. I just talked to James about it as well. Thank you for this. I think the inclusion on the conditional use is, is all perfect. I think for increasing the cap, the one thing I would say is that we would like to see the caregiver retail store increased as well, because the chances are a couple of our caregivers will continue, and they would like to be able to sell to their patients through our adult use retail store. I mean, things are separated within the retail space, but we would like the building to be able to afford a patient area. And the other thing was, I just wanted to make sure it's, I'm always a little confused about adult use versus just a general marijuana title here, but this currently says, and I'm just looking at the RCI zone, it currently says adult use production facility, but again, I would like to ensure that that includes medical as well.
I think that was an omission on my part where I, so this, this table is based off of what was approved. I think I just missed the medical production part. I got to add that to the table.
And as far as the increase of the caregiver retail store, I would, I would say we could revisit that for the June vote, but I don't want to change anything that we've already got, that we've already submitted to the selectmen and whatever here. Certainly something, because the selectmen are going to have their own public hearing, and if you want to go to them and say that...
Well, there's something regarding when you have your license for one, getting it for the other through the state, isn't there? There's a certain issue with, if you're a caregiver and then you want to switch to recreational or added recreational, they may have an issue with you doing out of the same facility, right?
They've, I think they've changed their, like, kind farms, created two buildings. I think as they're creating two buildings, they changed their...
They've relaxed that, so you don't have to have two separate buildings. You can do it within the same space, but there are delineations within the building and the way the sales happen, so that adult use and medical are separated.
I just want to make sure I didn't mess anything up for you with the state if we, yeah.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but I don't, I'm not comfortable with making any changes like that at this point.
I'll be, I'll be back to the selectmen on the 10th.
Okay.
So I can talk to them about that.
And you can tell them that that's, yeah, been expressed, but, yeah.
Okay. So you folks would consider it's just, you don't want to throw a...
Yeah. I don't want to change anything that I've already submitted to them. And then if they want, if they want to change it on their level and have that voted on, then that's, then that's probably fine.
All right.
You're going to add something about medical.
Yeah. Yeah, that, there should be a row there. There are, there are existing medical cultivation on there.
Okay. Thanks, Jody. Anybody else for the public hearing for land use ordinance amendments? All right. Seeing nobody else come forward, I'm going to close the public hearings for tonight and move on to the approval of minutes. Because it makes sense. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Anybody found anything that James screwed up on?
No.
Really? Me neither.
He's getting better.
He's getting better. My god.
It's the pressure.
Give him a raise. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Move to approve.
All right. So moved. And we have a second. All in favor of approving the minutes as written?
Aye.
And that is five to zero. Moving on to old business. So the first thing on our agenda for old business is the solar farm at Sophie's Way. And don't forget that your microphone comes off the stand. This is a new feature that we're offering, so you can walk around and hold the mic. Everybody will be able to hear you.
I'll start here. Good evening. My name is Owens McCullough, an engineer with Sebagot Technics here tonight on behalf of New England Solar Garden. Also with me is Tiffany Chase, who is the director for New England Solar Garden. We appreciated the opportunity to meet with the planning board a few weeks ago. Tonight, we had a site walk, well attended, which was great. Had a chance to interact with members of the board and the public and answer a few questions. I think it was really helpful for us and everybody to gain a little more insight into the project. Out of that, I think probably the most substantive discussion was around visual, and I think that probably stems from another solar project that was next to one of the, one of the Butters' who was about 40 feet from their solar, from that solar garden. In our case, the nearest to Butters, probably 200 feet, and that's the Butter to the south, who New England Solar Gardens actually met with, and we agreed to put some evergreen landscaping in along their property line. And also, we're going to use a fencing system called a knot wire fencing. We talked about it in the field. It's more like an orchard fence, and that's going to have a, a green screen across it on that side of the property line. The other side, the other property that was some discussion was the Daley property. And there's a couple, and I'm sorry, I don't remember their name. They rent from Mr. Daley, and they're the ones that are 40 feet from that other solar farm on the other side. They're about 300, 350 feet to our solar farm on it. And that, the first cluster of the solar array that you see, okay, now I'll use this.
All right.
I'll be brave. Okay. This is upside down. Sorry about that. Okay. So these are the Kulikowskis, and they're the ones that Tiffany and Michael Redding have had some conversation with. And they're here, our solar, the first cluster of our solar is in this location here. It's kind of a, an cut area with some trees. When we were out there, we looked at it. There's actually a pretty good natural buffer between us and the Kulikowskis, but with leaves off, there's some concern that they have visual through it. So we've agreed to put in, on the fencing, this, a green screen.
I have an example of it from the, from the application.
Yep, there you go. Thank you.
So if any of the Butters are interested in looking at it, I've got an example of the fence and the screening. You can come up afterward and look at it.
So that would be located along their property line, and then we show some evergreen trees that we would plant along that, that side of the property line. On the other side, over on the Daley side, this is the folks that we met out there on site. So there's, they have an open field area here. There's a clump of trees. It looks like it's actually on the, it is on the Daley property, and then the clump basically stops at our property line, where they had done the clearing in the past for wood harvesting. Within that area, there's some growth that has started to come back, probably four or five years. I don't know when it was actually cut over. But along that side, we are also proposing to put in the green screen. My expectation is that, based on what they told us in the field, they will probably be able, when the, when the leaves are off the trees, they'll be able to look through, and it'll be a broken view, but they'll be able to see the tops of the, of the, of the solar. So we'll put that green screen on that side to break that view up and through there. The rest of the solar is, and there's a good sized break of several hundred feet, probably 500 or 600 feet in this area, and that's because there was some natural resources, some wetlands, invernal pools we had to deal with, so we couldn't develop in that, in that area. Then the rest of the solar array is pushed to the back half of the property. So when we were standing on the site, we were standing basically down in here, and that solar array was roughly 1,000 feet further back than we were on the site. That was also cut over, but we'll have to clear it, stump it, grub it. It'll be regraded, well, the grading will be very limited. It'll just be to smooth the surface out, because we don't need to, this land fits our solar array very well. So it's just remove the stumps and brush, grade it out, and replant it. We use a pollinator mix when it goes back down to encourage bees and other insects and things that use pollinators. That would be mowed twice a year as part of it. If the vegetation starts to grow up too fast right around the solar arrays, they may come up and knock a piece of that, some of that grass down right around the solar arrays, but generally twice a year it would be mowed. The entire solar array will be fenced. Again, we use, we use a knot wire fence. It's on there. There's some colored pictures in the packet. It's a little more orchard looking, a little better visual to it. It also has the advantage that we can leave cutouts in it to let fox and smaller animals in and out, so that the inside's not a haven for things we don't want in there, chewing on wires and all that other good stuff. So that'll all be fenced in. Tiffany has spoken with the fire chief, who said he didn't need to walk it. She went over it with him. We need, we'll put in a Knox box with, so that they can have access to its, I think that, it's a cipher lock on those, that they knew now. It's a code on it now that they punch in, and then they can get into the, into the solar array if they need to. What we generally find is fire departments are not planning to go inside the solar array. Their job is to, they're going to contain it, and then we call the insurance company, I guess. But the solar array, just a couple of quick things from the past. This is a, it's all in the applications, a fixed tilt solar array, similar to the other ones that you've seen and around. We either use these driven C channels that go into the ground five, six feet, depending on the soil conditions, and then there's a frame system that sits on top, and then the solar arrays are placed on at about 30-degree angles, the optimum. If we hit rock or ledge in it, we'll use a screw auger system instead, drill into the, and bolt it into there. We usually do a geotechnical investigation just before we get started on the site. The access road coming into Sophie's that comes up to the Kulikowski's house is actually a pretty good gravel road. Beyond that, there's a gravel road that runs up to sort of that crest of that hill we were at. We will be widening that. We need to get it up to roughly 20 feet, so that it provides adequate access for emergency and for construction. The driveway coming in, as they do the work, if the trucks rut it up or anything like that, which is likely to happen from heavy trucks coming up, they're going to, they'll regrade it, they'll shim it with gravel, so that we restore it to our advantage, too, to have a good access into it. They do plow the driveways coming into it. They'll have a contract with somebody to come in and plow it during the wintertime, so that there's access into the site. There'll be overhead power ran up to the site. There'll be a transformer and an inverter roughly in this area, and then again, up in this area for the solar array. Those are overhead lines that come in, and CMP really dictates to us how many poles we have. We've thought, it's usually between four and six, right? And they have a, I'm not an electrical engineer, I'm a civil guy, but the poles, they have these, what they call reclosers on them, so that if power goes out, or if there's an issue, they can shut it down, so that they're not, if they're out here working on the line, they're not, the solar array isn't sending power back into the line, you know, kind of like a home generator and a transfer switch. You don't want the alignment to, but CMP controls that and can shut that down. The solar arrays are monitored remotely, so if they're, they monitor their production, right? This is how they make their money back on it. And if the production drops off, then they know that maybe there's a broken panel, or maybe there's, in the winter, maybe we have a lot of snow, and there's a lot of snow cover on it, and then they'll come out and remove the snow on it. But they'll monitor those remotely. The biggest, you know, during construction, obviously, there'll be dump trucks and excavators and stuff that comes up into the site. The posts that are, that get driven, there's a track machine that comes up and drives the post in, or drills the screw augers, the panels, and the framework is all assembled by hand. They come in and install them all by hand. Then when they're done with all the fencing and everything, it's very infrequent that somebody visits the site. If some power drops off, or there's an issue with something, they'll send out a service technician to investigate and fix whatever it needs to be done. The solar panels themselves are, well, the lease is 20 years with five, four, five-year renewals, right? And everybody asks, you know, how long does the solar panels last? Well, after about 20 years, data shows that they might drop 10% in power, but at that point, there's, you know, there's a big investment to put these in, so they get that return on the investment. And after 20 years, those panels are still producing and putting energy into the grid and, and making money for the investment. So they have these four, five-year renewals for another 20-year. And even after that, the panels drop off maybe to 80% of their power, maybe less. And technology can change, right, as time goes on, so it could be new technologies, even more efficient panels, but what they find is there's a secondary market for these panels that go to homes, commercial uses. There's a value for it. And I guess, I also understand down in New Hampshire, Revision Energy has implemented a recycling factory down in, I think it's New Hampshire or is it Nass? New Hampshire. So there is a place to recycle and restore them. And these are all, they all come from China, sorry. We all hope that America will start producing them, but right now, they come from overseas, and there's, they've got, they project how many panels they need, and those panels are stored and ready for use on them, so they have the panels available on them. Within the site, the electrical is underground that then goes to the transformer and then back down to the, to the grid. This project has got all of its, it's made it through the CMP process. It's got its, okay, Tiffany, what's that other term?
I-39.
I-39. Yeah, she'll have to explain that if you want to know. But the I-39 approval, it's really, it's ready to go as far as being able to be constructed. So we had to file a Maine DEP and RPA permit application for Tier 2 because of the, they call it, we have a little bit of direct wetland impacts, but most of our impacts are indirect impacts, which have to do with land cleaning. We don't actually grub and stump and do anything with the, we just remove the trees, and that's called indirect impacts. So we filed that with the DEP, and it's in process being reviewed. If all goes well, and if this board were to approve the project, it would likely try to start construction late fall, if we could. Depends a little bit on the weather. If we get a lot of snow early, that might put a damper on the plants, but...
Let's hope not.
Let's hope not, yes. So that would be the, the process on it. A couple of things that came up on the site walk, another couple of items was, there was some questions about noise. The only noise that these generate is, there's a, here, been around transformer, transformer pad, heard that low hum. That's what you'll hear. The, these transformer pads are here and all the way up here, hundreds of feet away, so if anybody detects it, it'll be really minor. And even if you stand next to it, it's not a, it's, it's a low hum. I guess I wouldn't want to have one live right next to one right there, but we're several hundred feet away, and it's very low.
Probably hear 236 before you hear those.
Yeah, I would think so. So that's with noise. And then there was some questions about if during construction, based on some experiences folks had with the other solar arrays, if they need to contact anybody, you know, they have to go through, I think it was a daisy chain was the word that was used. So Tiffany here gave out her phone number to anybody and everybody at the site walk, so we're going to post it on a big sign out there.
Tiffany's about to have her number changed. Just calling Verizon tomorrow.
So that, when it goes into construction, that if questions come up, and I think at the last meeting, I had in my notes that there was a request that there'd be a sign up there that say, tells who they could, somebody could contact or anything if there was questions. That came up the last meeting. They'll put a sign up there anyway that says, this is, you know, advertise, not really advertisement, saying who developed this. And I don't see any issue with putting a name and a contact number on there.
Put your contact number on the sign. How about that? Tiffany's been so generous with hers.
I told them they could, they can use mine, but they call me. I'm just going to tell them to call Tiffany, so it's better to have Tiffany up there. You're going to be a very popular person in the state of Maine with their solar. I'll vote you in for that. Let's see. What else was discussed out there that was really around the visual, the noise, a lot of just general conversation about the construction of the solar arrays, all good stuff. We were glad to meet with everybody out there and have a conversation.
It was a very good site walk, very well attended, and we loved that. So I know that Phil, I know we have questions from the board, so to catch up the members of the public, because a lot of people are not well versed on how these meetings go. We had our first meeting where we looked at their application. Their application is complete, so their application was voted complete. Today's meeting was the site walk, the public hearing. Now the board is going to ask questions and kind of go through that stuff. We've got a set of, so I do want to read off the conditions of approval, just because this tends to answer most questions. And if people haven't read them yet, then this might help. So these are the five conditions that we're considering putting on, on this application. So before a certificate of occupancy is granted, a stamped decommissioning plan and proof of a surety bond in the amount recommended by the plan taken out on behalf of the town of Berwick. Oh, there's like a period there that shouldn't be there. I'm like, why is that there? Shall be submitted to the Community Development and Planning Office. Who wrote these? Number two, if the solar...
I can't blame it on me, too, anymore.
No, it's definitely you. If the solar farm stops producing power for one year, the property owner shall have one year to implement the decommissioning plan. The bond shall be called by the town, and the bond shall be released to the town for remediation. Number three, the applicant shall keep the surety bond active and current. The cost estimate for the decommissioning plan shall be updated every five years to reflect cost changes. Number four, the condition of Sophie's Way shall be documented. Before construction of the solar farm, any damage to Sophie's Way shall be remedied within 30 days. And number five, any identified direct views from ground level shall be screened. I would like to put some kind of a timeline on that, just because I don't like open-ended things personally. I, I think that screened within six months of issuance of certificate of occupancy gets you through a variety of seasons in the state of Maine. But I'm open to suggestions on that. I just don't want to leave it open-ended. But, so those are the conditions of approval that we have so far. The findings of fact are all in there. You guys can look at those. But Phil, I'd like to start with you, and any questions you have for the applicant?
Yeah, just, so the transmission lines that are going to take your power from, from there, are those going to be adjacent to Sophie's Way, or do they tie right into the CMP lines that run adjacent to the property?
These will run down Sophie's Way and tie, I think these are transmission lines that are there, but, so we'll tie back into the power that comes up to 236. CMP does a study on voltage and how it gets to the substation, but I think we actually stake some poles out in the field coming up Sophie's Link.
Yeah, they're all over it. It says all overhead utilities. I've got a full set of plans here, but it does say all overhead utilities.
Okay, right on.
But yes, it will come back down Sophie's Way to 236.
Okay, excellent. And so you guys are going to widen Sophie's Way to facilitate construction, is that correct?
The, the existing, first piece of Sophie's Way, we're not really intending to widen that piece of it. It's really after the Kulikowskis, probably said that wrong, Kulikowskis driveway, that the road...
Right. It gets very primitive right there.
Yeah, it's very primitive. So we will improve that out to the 20 feet in width to get into the site. And that will continue up through the site to the Hammerhead turnarounds, which are really there for emergency vehicles and for, frankly, for access for the developer when they have to maintain the...
And it looks like the fence goes around the solar array, but the, the actual road is not going to be fenced off, so...
That's correct. Yeah.
And the turnaround is of sufficient size that emergency vehicles can turn around up in there?
Yeah, it's designed for a fire truck to pull in and back out.
Excellent. That's all I had.
That's it?
That's it.
Allison?
I'm good.
Jerry?
I'm good, after today.
I'm good, too.
Wow. Well, I'm good, too. This has been a very, I'll say it, it's been a very thorough, I mean, we've got this booklet that I don't even know, because it's not numbered, but like, this is, this is what we got as an application. This is the most thorough application we've gotten.
Thank you.
And I think the most environmentally friendly.
Yeah.
I mean, really, with like the fence letting fox through, who, we never, never even heard of that before.
I like to say that was my idea, but that was their idea.
Stop, Tiffany.
I didn't intend to do that.
I was going to say, do you own this company? You're getting there.
Numbers on the Foxes' colony.
So this is the time, so if we don't have any other questions, I mean, do you have anything, James, that is a question or concern or anything for you? So at this point, you guys, we have the findings of fact in front of us. We have the conditions of approval. We would go ahead and approve the findings of fact, then approve the conditions of approval, and after that, we have the option of approving the application. I would like to, again, address condition number five, to put some kind of a time limit on there, and I just am looking to you guys for guidance.
I think six months would do it for that.
Six months from CO, so that's like, it's, it's there, and then six months after that. I mean, that might give a full year.
Yeah, is there any reason why you wouldn't be able to? Would your, I mean, are they going to be installed in six months?
Well, the screening, we've agreed, we're going to put the, that screen, that screen's going in on both sides of it, so.
We're just like, just in case there's something that pops up.
I mean, I wouldn't want to put the screens necessarily before the panels themselves. So will the panels be installed six months after we approve this, or no?
Oh, the panels, I mean, no, for the, this would be within six months of occupancy, so.
Oh, okay, so you'll have it.
The project's going to be finished. So let's say the project isn't finished until the end of next summer, and then the leaves fall off the trees, and in December, we've got some views of the panels, then.
Yeah, as long as it's during the growing season that we plant, that's all that matters, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, it just has to be in the growing season.
We don't want to plant it in December, but if we identify it.
Well, we could try, but I'm not sure that would.
Any identified direct views from ground level shall be screened, yeah, within six months of CO.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting, or.
Seasonal.
Oh, that's a tough one. Yeah, that's what I mean, it's hard.
This is the stuff we deal with.
No, I appreciate what you're saying. Maybe you could just add unless it, unless the end of the six months falls within an on-growing season.
That's fair.
Okay.
The concern from the walkthrough was, and I think you, Tiffany brought this up, was we wanted to look at it with the leaves off the trees.
Right, right, yeah. It did want to see what, so that we, for supplemental plantings, we could position them for the most benefit. Correct, yeah, yeah. So any identified direct views from ground level shall be screened, shall be identified within six months of certificate of occupancy and screened at an appropriate time within the growing season? I don't know. I just want a timestamp on it. Can you remember what I just said? Look at this.
It's on the, yeah. They got you.
Okay.
And it is in there somewhere that you guys will maintain a plow contract to keep the road clear, correct?
Yeah, it's written in one of the documents we went through. It's probably, so we went, actually, we went through and went through all of the standards and the conditions and tried to address each one of them, so that it sort of formed a record, but yeah, I think that's in there that will maintain the road.
Great.
They have to by insurance.
Yeah, exactly. Any other conditions or anything that you guys can think of? Sounds like we've got it pretty well covered. So in that case, if you have had an opportunity to review the findings of fact, we would need a motion to approve the findings of fact for the Sophie's Way New England Solar Garden project.
I will make a motion to approve the findings of fact.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have five in favor, no opposed. And so the next vote that we have is to vote on the conditions of approval as amended.
I make a motion. Approve as amended.
Go second.
All right, so seconded by Jerry, and all in favor of approving the conditions of approval. So that's five, zero. And so the last vote that we need is to approve the project for the solar farm off Sophie's Way.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, seconded by Paul, all in favor.
Aye.
And we have five, zero. So you are approved. Congratulations.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for being so thorough. Makes our job easy.
Do you need, do you do a signature plan? Do you need, James, do you need a, do you guys need a, like, the word used to be Mylar, but the registries don't do Mylars anymore. Do you need anything from us? I know subdivisions, but sign plans aren't always, relies on the findings of fact.
Right. I think it'd be more if you need it, you need a signed, registered.
Just the findings of fact.
Yeah, I know, that works for us.
Title attorneys in both cases for all that stuff.
Yeah, we'll get that to you. I'll sign it.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, you're welcome to leave if you're here for just anything that's already been talked about, please. You don't have to stay for this. So I am going to open up my second public comment. That is for anything under the purview of the Berwick Planning Board, if you are a resident or property owner in the town of Berwick, or something that has not been talked about already tonight. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close our second public comment session and open up informational items. James?
I don't, I don't have anything to share.
Wow.
I'll share.
All right.
All right, so we have a vote coming up in November, so I just want to let everyone know, if you haven't already, make sure you're tuning in to all the planning board meetings, select board meetings. They're posted, of course, online, so you know ahead of time when they are, and then you can also watch them if you miss them. And then we also have Berwick votes, so if you're interested in getting involved in spreading the word about voter information, feel free to email berwickvotes@gmail.com.
I'll just follow up on that. The land use ordinance amendments were provided to the selectmen the previous Tuesday, where they had a meeting. They're online, you can go to the public notice section online. They're also in the land use ordinance section online as well, so you can view the, I'll be back to the selectmen on Tuesday, and then it'll be finalized. Also, this will go to our town attorney in the meantime, so August 10th, that'll be the final version, and that'll be online.
And is that their public, is that the selectman's public hearing for that?
It's.
Or they already have had their public?
So August 10th is, that's the deadline for it to, the ordinances, the proposed ordinance are locked in stone. The public hearing actually won't be till, I believe, October 20th or something like that. So we'll make that date available soon.
Awesome. All right, well, looking at the agenda, the last thing is the adjournment.
Well, if there are no further issues for the planning board consideration from the depths of the Berwick Town Hall and the esteemed Burgess Meeting Room, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I love it.
All right.
Did it? I'm done, sorry. Still on air?
No, we're good.
Okay, but it says run, oh, there we go. I'm going by the side. I'm going.
You got to get them up, Tiffany, they're used to it, come on.